Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to call the Tuesday, May 8, 2018 Committee, the whole meeting to order. It's approximately 6:18 PM. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Councilman Roth.
Here.
Councilman Burgess.
Yeah.
Councilwoman Bailey.
Here.
Vice Mayor Shelley.
Here.
Mayor Ford.
Here. Any additions, deletions, deferrals? Anything? Nothing? No. Tab one is the approval of the minutes. Is there a motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a second? All in favor? Motion carries. Tab two, surplus property.
Mayor, the City of Homestead's Energy Department have determined that the electrical meters on Exhibit One are no longer adequate for their intended purposes. They have also become obsolete and are no longer needed for public purposes. Staff recommends Mayor and Council approve the attached resolution and authorize City Manager to surplus the attached list of surplus electrical meters that will be sold by means of online auction or disposed of by other authorized procedures. This is in accordance with City of Homestead Code, Section 2-440, Surplus Property.
Any questions from Council? Is there any comment from the public? Is there a motion?
Moving.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Tab three.
Mayor, the evaluation committee recommends that the Mayor and Council approve the attached resolution authorizing the City Manager to enter into an agreement with Miller Legg for architectural and engineering services for the Biscayne Everglades Greenway Project, RFP number 201721, in a lump sum amount of $257,600. This project will be funded with the $206,000 FDOT grant that the city was awarded. The remaining $51,600 will be paid by park impact fees.
Questions from Council? Mr. Burgess.
Thank you. How was, I guess, one of my questions is, how was this leg of the Greenway, or whatever you, determined to be the first one developed? From where we're going, from point A to point B, how was that determined to be the first portion of development?
Councilman Burgess, where we start is where the county ends, at 137.
Right.
So we start there, and then we end at 191. But after the Maori Drive, after the C-103, becomes a share of the road, and then it becomes part of the road areas. So this would be part of the trail, right next to the C-103.
I understand that, but how was that determined? That that's where we wanted to go first and do that part of the trail?
When they did the master plan. That's what we wanted to start at, when we first started the master plan.
And what does the county have planned on their portion from there out?
The county is already almost to Biscayne, and they are already negotiating with the Air Force Base, because the Air Force Base had some issues with their trail coming towards us, and I know they're working that out now. And then they have already started on working on bridges so far over there off the C-103.
So that leads me to the question now. So do we, if the Air Force Base continues to have problems with it, what happens over there?
They might have to find another way to divert the trail to come back around to where we're going.
It would end up regardless where we're going to start?
Correct.
Okay. Because that's what I was trying to get at.
Yes, sir. It's going to be where we started.
Okay.
All right, sir. Any other questions, comments? Any comments from the public? Is there a motion?
Moving.
Moved and seconded? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Tab four.
Mayor, Aspira of Florida Inc. is requiring that the Mayor and Council authorize the City Manager to approve a waiver of usage fees for a total amount of $500 for the use of William F. Dickinson Community Center Banquet Hall on June 5, 2018. They are a nonprofit charitable organization that operates three charter schools across Miami-Dade County in the underserved communities of North Miami, Wynwood, and Aspira Leadership and College Preparatory Academy in Homestead. They are requesting this waiver to host their eighth-grade prom. From 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, there is no charge for students attending this event. The event is not open to the public.
There any questions from Council? Are you the applicants in the back? Does anyone have any questions? I know, Mr. Shelley, you probably have a question. Would you come forward, please, and give us your name and address for the record, please?
Good afternoon, Your Honor and members.
Pull that microphone down to you there. We want to hear what you say. Perfect.
Good afternoon, Your Honor and members of the Council. My name is Catherine Santistela, and I am the President of Student Council of Aspira, Class of 2018. We're here to request the banquet hall located at William Dickinson Community Center on June 5, hours 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM school hours.
Any questions for this young lady? Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. One no. Mr. Shelley voted no, because you're not open free to the public. Thank you for coming up, okay?
Staff recommends Mayor and Council authorize City Manager to award bid number 201806, removal and replacement of rapid infiltration trenches, number two and five, to American Pipeline Construction LLC in the amount of $184,700. This project is part of the City of Homestead's Capital Improvement Plan, number 454. City must meet standards established by law EPA to govern the safe potable water for its residents, to meet the requirements, proper maintenance of trenches is needed to minimize clogging and backup. Trenches two and five are effluent trenches. Infiltration exfiltration trenches are perforated pipes buried in trenches that have been backfilled with stone or sand aggregate. Urban runoff diverted into the pipe gradually infiltrates from the pipe into the trench and into the subsoil, eventually reaching the groundwater. A filter cloth surrounding the rock trench is used to minimize clogging. By the way, you hear that? That's the sound of people changing channels at this point. The purpose of the exfiltration trench is to retain the first flush of stormwater runoff to promote water quality improvement, reduce runoff volume, and peak discharge rate from the site, thus helping to reduce downstream flooding and channel degradation, filter contaminants, runoff before they reach receiving waters, and promote the recharge of groundwater supplies. The city's rapid infiltration trenches receive 100% of treated wastewater effluent, and there'll be a quiz at the end of this for any of you that want to know.
That's it, Mayor? Do you know what you just said? That's very exciting, Mr. Manager. Thank you for that. Any questions from Council? Any questions from the public? Is there a motion?
Moving.
Is there a second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Tab six.
Mayor, this is a discussion on the feasibility study that was done on the sports complex. We have the consultant on the phone who was supposed to be here with us, but he got the flu, but he's kind enough to be on the phone if you'd like a presentation. Couple of things to note about this report is, number one, it provides you with a lot of the research they did, and also some of the options for the stadium. The issue that we're most interested in the immediate future is, most of the options that he's provided includes a demolition of the current stadium, so that we can save some money in our operating budget, because the costs of maintaining it are fairly significant. So after the presentation, if you'd like the presentation, the main thing we'd like for you to decide tonight, if possible, is if it's okay for us to start the process of looking for demolition companies. Of course, we'll come back to you with the contract, and then you can make your final decision once the contract is before you. But we didn't want to start the RFP process until you at least had some discussion about the study and whatever questions you might have. And with that, Dennis, first of all, Mayor, did you want a brief presentation from the consultant on the phone?
I'd like to see the presentation.
Okay, great. So Dennis, if you could introduce him.
Yeah, on the phone is Chris Brewer. He's, Chris is the one that did the feasibility study for the stadium, so he's on the phone. So, Chris, you can go ahead and start.
Dennis, thank you very much. Yes, this is Chris Brewer. Apologies for not being there. My wife and I both, well, we had a problem last night this morning. In case of this case, you should have our screen, our first slide reflects an acknowledgement of the location of the Homestead Sports Complex within the actual potential zone for the military airport. The ACDC-2 designation has been probably the primary thing that we struggled with throughout the entire study, and has brought that implication for use of a portment site, but not the entire site, that we spent a lot of time talking to the staff about, and planning implications in terms of what the reuse option could be for the site. Let's move to the next slide. Slide four, again, just over the perspective of the Homestead Sports Complex, the school below that corner of the main baseball stadium, as well as other baseball and softball stadiums. We go to the next slide, slide five. We went to an effort to create different sub-partization plans for the site, understand how much acreage was within the red zone, the ACDC-2 zone, and how much acreage roughly is outside of the zone. The important point to make here is, there's a significant amount of stormwater facilities, stormwater products on the site, one of them, those are the parts of the east, so it's a large area of stormwater to be used. These parts obviously could be discussed for results, and also understand, talk about the timing about looking at how stormwater is also handled, and other areas we've been with. But again, we wanted to do is understand how much acreage fell within or out of the ACDC-2 designation, given the basin factor. Let's go to slide six. Again, trying to get to the different amounts of acreage that we're dealing with. One of the key variables that we consistently run into because of ACDC-2 is that there is a threshold for daytime and nighttime population within the ACDC-2. That threshold of 50 jobs per acre, which tends to correlate with manufacturing warehouse and slack coverage, it tends to have a more difficult achievement on office level employment with that threshold. So again, that's probably one of the big problems we struggled with. Again, rough enough area of forty acres outside of the ACDC zone, roughly 43 acres within the ACDC-2 zone. So ultimately, what we wanted to do is understand the sort of critical factors that are driving me analysis. This is slide seven. In talking a lot with staff about the reality of the condition of the stadium, before the hurricane, we were looking at a million dollars in cost to repair and replace the roofs. I think my understanding from talking with staff was that when the police had moved in, they had renovated the building, but the roof was largely kept in condition. It's true, it's confirmed in detail, but it's hard to understand why we have to refer to the cost of mandatory roofs to increase, or probably close to, probably a million, billion dollars, close to a million five at this point. The other factor that we're going to talk about is the reality of maintaining that office space, because this reality is superior position just to keep that space in existence and condition, that cost of that, about half a million dollars a year. And again, Dennis, I talked a lot about these numbers, it helped recently, for the last six months. They're probably the driving factors in this, in this case, or we talked about demolition of the game around the time we had to renovate the building. The third goal, I think, perhaps most important, we have a number of options that we discussed that relate to the potential sale of sites, and the thing we want to bring forth is that there is a, these only framework replacements of the site, they mean that any transaction or change in use of the park is only taking. Obviously, these limitations have direct bearing on value, so this third goal is really an important point, is to understand the extent that we change the use of the park and the level of difficulty involved working through this evaluation, potential deviations in terms of our statute, ultimately important policy implications. So slide eight, again, we wanted to develop six options that frame the likely set of options in the site. We will not say that option one or six is picked. First option is that quote, option six, to understand, I don't want to make any changes to the options to the site. Options one and two are, it's both options, so we make the assumption that we are selling the entire site for one transaction, or we are selling the site in a series of three transactions over five years. What these two options get, if the site has access to the utilities, and that, again, effectively speaking, you could argue that the bulk sale would maybe set this kind of price relative to three transactions, three uses, which might have slightly more value for our foot. So again, one of these two options on the table, we're not representing them. I think from our perspective, given the direction we've got, we see in the southern area of Homestead, that the future is likely to correct on the plant, except the other point today. Options three and four reflect continued use of the site. On option three, we talked about the idea of selling four soccer fields on the site. We talked a lot, Dennis, about this. I think the primary concern with this scenario is that, while we have a lot of street stuff to do to soccer, and we have other facilities in Homestead that provide soccer, the provision to feel, obviously, the cost of life would require investment, and there was frankly some concern about the ability of that investment to cap fund. So again, we wanted to understand what that soccer, it could look like, with the knowledge that, you know, there's feasibility concerns in terms of covering costs. Option four is turn use with stadium demolition. Option five, slight variation, where we talked about relocating the parking wreck options for the clubhouse, which I believe is just beyond the, want to say, the right field wall of the stadium. So again, this option gets the extent to which we can, based on broader needs for City of Homestead staff, the extent to which moving parks and wreck to HSC would actually gain operational savings, if you leave, not considering, gives option six, which is our best plan. We do not need any one of those options. So slide nine and ten, yes, our summary of these options, because I've been talking about, like, listing three ways, so we talked about intent price value, so what's always worth today, if we spend this money over the next five years. On a average yield base, we look at, look at what the cost is for each option, and then the total cumulative position for each of the options. So this table shows options one, two, and three. Again, it's slightly different from options one and two, where it's giving a slight premium in value. For option one, the greatest sell property, retransaction, at a slightly higher premium. Obviously, both of these options would require zoning change, and that adds a level of volatility to any conversation they have with the land as well. It works. You do have assumptions, probably it might be worth presenting a zoning change. Obviously, it's a big regulatory question. Option three reflects, I'm sorry, I'm going to interrupt you. Option three reflects the options looking at, again, fourth option deals with demolition of the existing stadium. It would keep a lot of the existing parking in place. The main drivers of this option are, obviously, the capital cost for new soccer fields, as well as assumed, again, modern operating loss position on the new soccer field. So again, a slight negative, but again, I mean, that is perspective. We go to slide ten. Options four, five, and six, again, think about everything in terms of the baseline, because options six are selling a total net position of about 2.8 million, or net present value maybe on 2.4 million. Talking to Dennis this week, he's pretty clear that the cost of option six has increased due to the impact of the hurricane, likely probably approaching the three-point sell threshold, I guess. Comparing that to options four and five, obviously, a premium or a saving in terms of, you know, doing nothing, frankly, did. The relative factor is important, that's four and five, is that allows them to avoid spending money, you don't have to. But it allows them also, and talked about the ability to use the facility to support other festivals and events as well, that would be consistent with zoning. So again, they're always continuing to use the site and park and recreation capacity without stadium, stadium play. So those are slide ten, and slide ten is the summary. Then, if there's anything that obviously hasn't been able to question.
Does anybody have any questions from the Council? Let me ask a question, Dennis. You're talking about, one of the options is moving a portion, or moving all of Parks and Wreck out to the structure out there. Give me the advantage. Why does that, why is that an advantage? Because are you, are you not happy on the Sixth Avenue area, or what's the, what's the point?
I have two. One was, one of the things that Council has brought up about the turnpike bypass. If we do get a bypass on 328 Street one day, that our land would be valuable. And I thought, since Fleet is having problems now with all the cars that they have and vehicles, we're sharing lots, where we're getting too congested, and I really need space for the equipment that we have, which the stadium has, with the sheds and that. We also thought, you know, being in a park would be a pretty good thing for, you know, for Parks and Wreck. But more or less was, one was the, maybe the bypass comes one day and it's valuable, but also, and the fleet having problems with so much congestion, which we're sharing things with our equipment for, you know, surplus vehicles, our vehicles, our employees' vehicles, and all our equipment, and also to be there to have more storage and space for the employees.
Do we have use of that county property behind Fleet? Or is that, I know that was a park at one time.
Yes, sir. What that is, is the old BMX track. What we did, we went into agreement, we did a swap of land. We used to own the Miami Bridge and the Fire Department land, so we made a switch with the BMX to give them that land.
That belongs to you.
So it belongs to us, sir.
It belongs to us.
And we're all surplusing all our old vehicles in there right now.
Questions? Mr. Shelley, you were going to... Vice Mayor?
No, I guess, so the question from staff then is, is tonight you're looking primarily for, what, whether to demolish or not demolish, you know, go with one of the, one of the five options, or the do-nothing option? Is that kind of the first question of the day? And then come back later on to discuss the details of where to go from here, or what?
Basically, what we're asking for is, if you're comfortable with at least us issuing an RFP for demolition companies, and then we'll come back to you, and if you decide at that time, you, after thinking through the report, you don't want to do demolition, then we can just not approve that contract. On the other hand, it gives us the ability to start the process, and in the meantime, we think we're going to need a little time to at least have a more substantive discussion with you about the options for this property, because most of them involve money in one form or another, and we just feel, we'd like to get through the budget process. We have a lot of challenges this year just to get through that, and my, my hope would be, after the budget process is over, at that point, you know, you all have given this report some thought, and then unless you have very strong positions now, in which case, obviously, if you're prepared to give us direction, then we'll accept it.
Okay. Yeah, and so I'm okay with that direction, as far as getting you guys moving forward. I know this is something we've discussed for probably five or six years now, as far as what to do with the stadium. We've tried various things, nothing has worked out. You know, it seems to be more of a money pit than anything else, as far as the structure itself, trying to maintain that building. So I mean, I'm okay giving you guys direction to go ahead and start the process, and then, you know, ultimately come back for us to decide on a final demolition, and then other issues. I know that we had this general presentation, I think we all got the one-on-one presentation that kind of outlined this. I don't know that I was necessarily thrilled about it. I think I had, you know, great dreams when I, when we originally started this concept of big and better things, and something exciting, and, you know, fun for our community to go to, based on this land that we own. But I also think one thing this study did illustrate was the reality of the world, which is the cost and/or the non-feasibility of some of the exciting things we had all thought and discussed. So, you know, if nothing else, the study at least brought us down to earth and realized that, you know, there's more functional stuff I think we're going to have to do with this property long-term, but we can have more of that debate and discussion as we move forward, but for tonight, I'm okay giving you guys direction.
And also, one other thing I'd like to add is, one of the, one of the reasons we thought this study was a good idea is, for anybody that wonders, geez, what could we do with that stadium, is it was a kind of a last-ditch effort to figure out, is there anything? Is it a viable thing? And I think we have national experts that also looked at it, in addition to the two-decade history we have with it. It seems at this point, the question has been asked and answered.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Burgess?
Thank you, Mayor. No, I agree with Vice Mayor Shelley. Unfortunately, the dream of baseball and many other events out there is nothing but a dream. You know, the, baseball has moved on and, and put regulations on where they can and can't do things, so they're not coming back. I had a gentleman that was interested in it, and had been out there looking around, walking around, riding around, and with all the repairs that are needed, he just, there's no way. He walked away and said that, you know, there's, he doesn't even want to take the liability of the building on. You know, and I think Dennis has shared that it's really about $3 million to do the roof now, to, if you were to do it, is, I think, is what we discussed the day that I had my briefing.
Almost, almost $2 million.
Yeah, so...
And we're also already getting vandalism already. We're trying to keep it up the best we can, so just, you know, a lot of team to maintain.
Right. Unfortunately, for all of us here, that we've been given this, and it's been nothing but a money drain on, on the city. People have tried, but nothing ever takes off down there, and I think, you know, that some people would come in with big dreams, and then they realize that it's a long way from here to a lot of Miami and Fort Lauderdale, and they just can't get the crowds to come down here in the afternoons to partake in the, in whatever their planned programs are. So I agree with Councilman, excuse me, Vice Mayor Shelley, and, and that we should go out to bid and see about getting rid of this money pit that we have, that's just been draining us, especially as we, as the mayor, as the manager has stated, you know, it's, it's a tough year for us as we come. So we're looking to save everywhere, and, you know, we can keep dumping money into that stadium every year for nothing, just to sit there and drive by it and, and look at it and go, oh, we got a baseball stadium, or we can be responsible, I believe, and do what needs to be done. So I agree with the RFP being sent out.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Mr. Roth?
Thank you, Mayor. Does anybody have an idea of the approximate cost that would take to demolish the building based on what we just did on Chrome Avenue?
Careful when you get out on those...
Yeah.
Spits come in.
It's like a rolling dice in Vegas. I mean, I'd hate to, we've said numbers before, and then the RFPs come back cheaper. I mean, so if I had to take a guess, and I'm just, you know, don't quote me, about probably $800,000, $900,000?
And it costs us how much to maintain the building?
Go ahead, Chris.
Was, I keep, that's the cost of demolish?
Yeah. What was the estimate? We thought maybe the estimate would be?
So the, all the possible kind of playfills are $850,000 to demolish the building. One of the key variables is, you know, what kind of facilities are we dealing with, if they were spread lately or a foundation pile, but the assumption that the playfills in the budget is that is a $850,000.
Thank you, Chris.
I mean, I'm in line with Councilman John and the Vice Mayor here, that it's been a money pit for a long time, and I'm not sure there's too many people out there would, that, that would, would be sad to see it go. I'm kind of glad we're not discussing options tonight, just the fact that we're going to take down the building is a good option for me right now. As Vice Mayor said, we had, I guess we all had some pipe dreams about what was going to go out there, and reality is going to be a little different than, but I think where there's a will, there's a way, and based on what has come along with the downtown revitalization, our staff and our manager are capable of doing a lot of great things. I'm not going to challenge you quite yet, but I'd be happy to support... I'm not going to challenge you quite yet, but I'd be happy to support that we at least move forward on getting rid of the, as, as one of our former mayors and councilmen's used to call it, Nixon Corps, get rid of that pink elephant. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. He, he wanted to blow it up years ago.
What?
What the thought process was, let's find a, a, someone doing a film that needs to blow something up, let them pay us to blow it up, and then we'll pick up the pieces. But that was always the concept back during the Miami Vice days, you know? But we weren't willing to blow it up. But I will say one thing about the, the stadium, and we should be grateful for, the, you know, it came in and stepped in when we needed the police department to go someplace in a temporary situation, and everything that we did was going to cost 17, 20 million dollars. And us able to go out there and, and, you know, retrofit the stadium for a few million saved us a ton of money. So all the bad things, at the end, it was able to kind of come through and kind of bail us out a little bit because we were in a jam, real big jam. And, but I, I agree 100% we need to knock it down, get rid of it. And, and I'm going to add, don't sell the land. Don't sell the property. You, you can never buy it back, you know, for what we have it now. And all the other discussion, I think was, I think absolutely discussed till we're blue in the face, but don't sell it. Sorry, Mr. Manager. We were discussing the, you know, the, the request of yours to demolish. I think it's, I think it's very clear, everybody is on the same page, Bailey, I'm assuming. We're all on the same page to go forward with looking at the, the cost of demolishing. And do, do look at some of the film studios, if they're looking to blow up a really nice building, we have one.
Also, mayor, if you're, if, if there's consensus for the no sell option to take that off the list, I mean, we're happy to take that off as an option too.
I wanted, I wanted to add that because, you know, I just don't, I mean, we're looking for park spaces over by Waterstone, all that property is going to be, is through the roof value-wise. If we sold this for 16 or 17 million dollars, we could never replace it for that. And it's, it's a regional asset, and if we send the message to the development community right off the bat that, that we don't need any more townhomes, we don't need any more shopping centers, we don't need any more anything, we have a lot of that available on the table now in that community already, and adding this in is even a possibility. That's just, that's just my two cents, but I don't, I don't want to muddy up the waters a couple of council people that are, council members that are missing, okay? But just be real careful about selling that. So you have what you need, Mr. Manager?
It would appear that this consensus to move forward with an RFP, and we'll bring back the contract, and you'll decide then.
Okay. Chris, thank, Chris, thank you for your, your help tonight, and hope you and your wife feel better.
Yeah, I wish I could be there and apologize for that.
The final question, is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry, one quick thing.
Nope, nope. Nobody made a motion yet.
Can I have an executive session for Kim Hill versus Mayor Porter and City of Homestead, case number 118 CB 2412? Thanks.
Now, am I present in that or not? I don't have to go. Do I go?
You don't. If you don't want to, you can pass.
Okay, so you have one executive session. Is there a motion to adjourn? Moved the second? All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.